Or. I'll call this meeting to order. Are there any modifications additions to the agenda?
Yes, there are two. One comes from Commissioner Shepard. He reminded me this morning that this is actually when we affirmed the election of the officers.
Perfect.
So that usually happens in July. So there is an updated staff report. And that basically just reiterates the officers that are currently in place. And then the second one, which Commissioners Chapman and Garing brought up, and that's regarding the special license plate discussion. For very similar to, there's about fifty of them around the state, so. Open that up for a discussion later on. And you also should have. This document, or maybe it was sent to you via email.
It was sent and it's here too.
Perfect. So just those two additions, everything else.
Okay.
Looks good.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment. I see one person signed up. Mitch.
Yep. Mitch Schaefer.
Mitch Schaefer. Thanks for coming, Mitch.
Um, guys, thank you, Patty. I've reached out to the Port Hood River, speak with Miss Daryl Stafford about the possibility of a mobile sauna. I come from the Midwest, Minnesota, if you know here, sauna are a big part of just relaxing, either with your family, friends, or after an activity. Traveling back and forth from Minnesota, even in the areas such as Bend or up in Seattle. These places of sauna is a great place to relax and enjoy the area. At what people, it's nice to unwind from a day, concentrate on how it has a lot of health benefits. But speaking with Ms. Stafford, she said that. The areas that I would like to put a mobile sauna or offer that to the community of Hood River are on the Port Hood River. Property. And so I don't know the exact path to permitting or permission to park a trailer, which would be outfitted for sauna, a changing room. And hosting for between eighteen and twelve people at a time in the sauna. But she said to come here and present to the board this idea. And before getting the business together, getting funds and outfitting a trailer for this idea, then come with you guys. Here to propose this idea, offering three possible locations or taking input of locations you might have. But what it did is for anywhere between eighteen and twenty-four feet long. Self-generated, from our self-powered by generator, which would then heat up these sauna rocks for people to enjoy. It would be like a weight room or gym in which you'd have to sign up for a slot to use sauna to be maintained by myself and colleagues. People come to use. It doesn't have to be members only. It would be something that would add to the scenery of Hood River and the Columbia River Gorge. For people that are just in town here, wanting to take a break. Or maybe people that are traveling through that are more on the active side of things. Doesn't just have to be a winter thing or a summer thing. It could be all year round. Or could just be slotted. But I'm here today to try to. Get permission for one of the locations proposed there. One at the foreign arena. Another site would be five spith. And I want to be at the end of the hook. I don't speak with Ms. Stafford. Well, it's win season. I'm a win guy myself. And so I know that there's a lot of venues renting gear for people, but they somehow acquired. Permit or permission from you guys to have a trailer on the spots to use. So. I don't know at this point how to get permission or what that submission looks like.
Okay. Thank you very much. Since this is your first meeting, we listen to public comment, take it into consideration. We don't really. Interact, but we will have a discussion with staff and figure out the best way to answer your request. So thank you very much for coming.
Great. And then I follow up with you, Ms. Stafford.
Yeah, she'll follow up with you after we have an opportunity to kind of. Discuss. And as you know, there are a lot of moving parts with the bridge and, you know, there's, there's kind of a lot. Happening and with the lands down here. So definitely we'll have a discussion and Daryl will be in touch with you.
So quick question for you. Does this require any infrastructure at all, or could you truly be up and out of there in an hour if needed to be?
Up and out of there. Yeah, yeah, he would actually be having a semi-permanent structure so I can keep it here for a season, or maybe even bring it up to the mountain. Or other venues that might need it. But I think this down here at the port will be a great semi-permanent place for travel.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Have you done a business plan?
More just napkin scratches as far as.
But have you done any kind of survey that is there really a market for that down here in both seasons?
That's a, that's a great point. I guess. The only market research I could say is compared to the society hotel across the way. And they're very full bookings and reserved times. There are some, I mean, in winter times, months out. In summer times, sometimes weeks out. So it depends on, I guess. Spring breakings, people vacationing, definitely impacts that, but seasonally as well. So I have not done it, but. The society hotel is a very busy place.
In the wintertime, it's not all that busy down at the port.
The mountains busy. But the mountains busy.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, so then we will move on to the consent agenda. And so the adoption of the officers, unless there is discussion from anyone, if anyone wants to be president. You may volunteer for that now.
Are you, uh? Are you declining the position for the next?
I'm just off, I just want to make sure that it, that it's offered. If anyone, I think you're doing a great job. So, um, does anyone have any discussion for consent?
Oh, I just love to make a motion to keep going.
I know.
That's fine, unless there's a problem. You know.
We're good.
You're not suffering or anything.
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
More than fine to give up secretary if you want to become secretary.
I'm not going to get in everybody's way of taking their turn to president.
Wouldn't do that for the world.
Okay.
We'll be proof concerned.
All right, then can I get a second?
A second.
On favor?
Bye.
Hi. Okay, informational reports, bridge for replacement project update. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Shannon team? Nope. Sounds like a lot of progress is being made though.
Does everybody understand that there's a. A significant change to the better. With the new bridge as far as what it's going to look like. We're changing from concrete to steel. But with that said, the steel is going to be fabricated where there will be a. Kind of parabolic look to it. So. When you look at the drawings from afar. It looks like the old, the, the current approach to the bridge, other than the color. Color will be weathered steel. But by doing that, that gives us the capability of. Reducing the number of piers in the water. Which means we can make the spans a little longer. Which. I'm not going to put words on Kiwis' mouth, but it will be cheaper than the concrete option and faster. To get installed.
Well, I think we all like cheaper and fast.
Yeah. And faster.
Yeah.
Especially faster.
Yes, fast.
We like to use the word less expensive rather than cheaper.
Okay, thank you for that. Presentations and discussion items. We do have the bridge incident report. Mr. Greenwood, please take away.
Yes, and Patty, if you want to tee up the PowerPoint presentation. So in your report, we did. Staff put together kind of a, an assessment on what transpired ever since the. Since the event took place and really it culminated in some recommendations that I want to make to the board. But before I do that. There were a couple of things that I just wanted to correct. In the report that was brought to my attention. And so just for the record, on page forty. There's a reference to July twenty seventh. That should be June twenty seven. And then. I must have had difficulty understanding the difference between deductible and premium. Because on page. Let's see, section eight. There's two references where it says premium or says deductible, but it should be premium. And then also in the, this report was finished July ninth. And in reference to the insurance coverage. There was a statement that the vehicle involved had not been included on the schedule. Since that time, there's been new findings. And so. We are going to open it up to Scott, just to reference some of the updates, but. Anytime you're dealing with these insurance issues, they can take weeks, months, or if not years. So. I just wanted to clarify those items for the record. And really want to focus today on what's been taking place out on the bridge with the engineering. Maybe if you're, Justin Dornink is back. If you're calling, you first met him on June thirtieth. Which was the Sunday morning, the first time in twenty-five years in this line of work that I'd ever had a Sunday morning public meeting. And then we also have James Shear from, from Keywood is here as well. And then we have Scott Rainier back in the cheap seats on the insurance and some of the cost issues. And then I'll close out. With the recommendations. So. Next slide, and that'll be kind of the kickoff for, for Justin. So. If you can give an update on the engineering side of things.
Thanks, Kevin. All right, let's go to the next slide, please. So just to kind of recap, the last meeting, the recommendations that we provided to the port, and then I'll move into what the activities we've been doing since then. So. If you recall, our recommendations in June thirty on the, in the June thirty meeting was for the bridge. To have a temporary condition where the existing bridge lift span would remain in place and not be raised until all portal bracing is repaired. We said at the discretion of the port, marine traffic under the bridge may continue, provided the port can determine that there is sufficient vertical clearance to do so without raising the lift span. Third one, at the discretion of the port reopening of the bridge, two cars or passenger vehicles may proceed truck, truck traffic not allowed to mitigate the potential. For another accidental strike to the overhead bracing while the bridge is in a final damage state. And then the last recommendation. Was that we design, that the design of the final bridge repair plans, specifications and estimates should be expedited. With the resulting repairs to follow immediately after. So really, the next two slides I have are to talk about the fourth bullet point and what we've been doing since the, the June thirtieth meeting. So we could go to the next slide, please. All right, so design team activities since June thirty, twenty twenty-four. This slide captures the first week following that meeting. So starting between Monday, July first to Sunday, July seventh. We started immediately having daily coordinations with Keywood, the contractor, and also continued our intermittent meeting, meetings with the port. Many of these meetings are just to talk about progress updates, to talk about schedule. Make sure that we're all on the same page so that when we get to the final plans and specifications, there's no surprises to anyone. And that we're all headed in the same direction. We also worked with Keywood very quickly right in the first part of that week to, for advanced procurement of, of materials. We had section sizes, material sizes. Bolts, all those items that we wanted to get procured. So we worked with Keywood to get those procured. And then we went, we advanced our, the designs, the final designs of the repairs. And the specifications and developed our quantities. That was completed. We completed, we actually issued a stamped. Package of final drawings, specifications and quantities on July seventh. But between, you know, the first July's first over to the seventh, we were providing progress plots throughout the week to Keywood and to the port. Just to, you know, again, facilitate communication, get feedback from Keywood on constructability, get feedback from the port as well, and just making sure that we're all headed in the same direction. And then we provided the final plans and specifications on the seventh. This design team that supported. This work, the design work, was many of the same professionals that supported. The initial bridge assessment that you saw me report out on Sunday, June thirtieth. Those, those individuals are. It's a collection of professional engineers who have their PE license. They're structural engineers as well. They have their structural engineering license. And even in that mix, we have a couple PhDs as well that are licensed engineers as well. So. Very proud to be able to work with, with that group of individuals on this project. So that was the first we, and then we go to the next slide, please. Since then, after we issue final design plans and specifications, then we go into. The design team goes into a construction support phase. And during that phase, now it's primarily working with Keywood. To keep communications going, to keep planning for construction and keep talking through construction. So during that timeframe, we are responding to requests from information, which we call RFIs. From Keywood. And a lot of times, sometimes that's just a question that they might have about something. And we provide a formal written response for documentation on what that response is to them. That we also review construction submittals. There's various construction submittals that, that Keywood. Provides because as required by the specifications, we work with them as well to review those construction submittals on behalf of the port. Through our construction and support task in our task order. And we worked with Keywood on reviewing those submittals and getting those to an accepted or approved status. And then we also provide field support throughout the whole process. So last week and through this week. We have construction inspectors in the field when during the, during the work. And then we also have engineer, the engineer of record or a representative from the technical side in the field as well to help expedite decision-making in the field. On the fly, or, you know, to be able to be a part of the conversation so that we can take it back to the office the next day and expedite a decision in that way. And so we also have a lot of involvement in the field as well from our perspective. And that, that kind of brings us. Up to where we are today. And we continue to work in construction support, you know, on behalf of the port in the field and with Keywood as well.
So if there's any questions for Justin on the engineering side, if, if not, then we can move to James's presentation on the construction activities.
Yeah, again, I'm James Shear. I'm with Keywood on the project manager overseeing. This. Go to the next slide. I can use this one. So Justin's already kind of went through a timeline. I just put some stuff up here just to, I think we reacted pretty quickly by the. June second and third, we had a material list. And we had some drawings and specifications. We were able to get some material ordered. So starting on the second, we began. Fabrication of these steel members. Keywood has a facility in Portland, on the east side of Portland. That was able to jump on this, get the material order, get it delivered to their shop and begin the welding and fabrication. Of these, these parts and pieces. And I have some photographs of that later. We got notice to proceed on the fifth. So over the holiday. Weekend there, there was a discussion that's going on back and forth. And then on Monday, July eighth, we began working the field. Next slide. So there's six different locations that need to be repaired. So. This is a representation of what those, where those six different spots are. There's some, some rules of like, we can't work on adjacent ones. Next to each other at the same time. We really need to finish one and then move on to the next one. So it's not like we could just go attack all these at the same time. So for example, last night we went out and we worked on. What we're calling Portal number one, number four, and number six. So next slide. This is an overview of these working drawings that Justin was talking about. We got the drawings. And we went out in the field and we'd noticed I highlighted an area here where we thought that that gusset plate, we might be able to save it. And save us some time and some money. In the lead abatement and. And in the, just time wise, if. We only need to replace the A, B, C, and G portions, and we didn't have to go replace that gusset. So. This is just kind of a really good example of us Keywood and HDR working together to make, make this happen. So I've focused on portal number one, just for the audience to kind of see one portal in the progression. So when you go to the next slide. That's what portal one looks like in, in real life. So the first thing we had to do is we had to get specialists out here in, in lead paint abatement. So you can see where the guys are working. That's the, the gusset area. We had to. Remove all of the, the lead paint there. And then any other place that we were going to cut out or remove. We have to get the lead paint removed. Step one in the process was to remove the rivets that are, you know, attaching the members to the, these gussets. Rivets were used back in the, in the twenties and thirties to assemble these bridges. And. If you ever get a chance to watch a YouTube video of it, you'd be. You'd be impressed. They, they go in hot and they're red hot and then they get smashed down. And when they cool, they actually. Contract enough and put the right amount of tension in that member and keep it, keep it together. So. Kind of fascinating to work on some of these older structures. So step one was to go in there with a rivet buster and, and remove these rivets and replace. Them one at a time with a temporary bolt and then tighten up that temporary bolt. So you can go to the next slide. So this, this is last night as we were getting ready to. Start removing some of the members and where you see that there, there's paint removed. That's where like either we have a rivet removal or. And then there's some other spots where we've said, let's put a spot where if we need to flame torch, cut this piece out because it's bound up. We can give ourselves relief on that. So trying to think ahead and trying to, to pick up all those spots. Because we had to have those paint people go through ahead of us. There's a. Couple of spots where we just went a little extra and just in case we needed it. So. I guess the spot to kind of look at here is the person with the red sleeves on, on the left, kind of above his left hand. You see that spot there that's. Has the paint abated. And then there's also paint abatement on that vertical member. If you go to the next slide. So you can see, we, we went ahead and just cut that spot out. And later on, you'll see in another slide, we went back and we had to grind out the weld on that vertical member. You know, this is, this is an emergency repair and we're very happy that HDR is out there and we're working together. One of the things that kind of came up last night was the method in which we were using to remove the weld. That we, we couldn't use that method anymore. It's like it was called a carbon air arc. That removes that weld out of there. And instead, it's recommended that we use a grinder, which kind of takes a lot more time. And so with that in mind, we went to work, you know, now it's like, hey, we got, we got something new, you know, in, in the cards. So we went and tried to get out in front of ourselves and spent multiple hours last night. Going down to the other portals and getting those wells removed so that we don't have to have to do that kind of. While we're on the critical path. Next slide. So this is an. Kind of a really good photo of. You know, what needs to be done to put this thing back together. That we have drawings from the twenties and thirties when the bridge was built. It shows some of the different dimensions, but we can't really rely on those. Because we're kind of, we're piecing it back into an existing bridge. So. We've ordered these pieces long. We, we had some pieces that have been. Fabricated that were just the right exact length and that we, we caught that and we had like this piece on the bottom, that, that horizontal piece. We ended up having it fabricated six inches longer than it needed to be, and we only had to trim it two inches last night. So. Where you can see that piece of plywood up there that represents the new gusset plate. So we're getting everything fit into position and we're making sure all the geometry is right. And then we have a, a temporary piece of plywood there that we're going to mark up. And then we'll put that down onto the gusset plate down on the ground and we'll transfer those marks down there. And then we can cut the gusset plate and put it. And install it with bolts. The other thing we noticed is on that vertical member now, that, that piece of steel has been ground away and it has been removed. So. Next slide. Not just a different angle. Could you move that ribbon down below so we can see that the top of the. So all those pieces get brought up with a forklift and then we have a chain fall that secures it in place and it allows us. So we've like that horizontal number, we bolted it onto the left side and then we take the chain fall and we can. Move it ever so slightly back and forth, just to make sure we get the geometry right. Once all that's correct, then we've had the plywood up there and we can transfer the, the bolt hole location to that piece of plywood. So.
Should I go move the forklift down to the other end and start lifting the second one up?
Yeah. Yeah.
This one's up on chain balls.
Yes. Yes. And, and that, you know, there's many. Constraints that I should just mention, like. The, the. Amount of equipment, we can have the different spots on the bridge. We have to be very mindful of that, that we don't overload something. And then the other thing is we all know that the bridge is not very wide. So there's, once you park a piece of equipment in there, you have to know that. You're not blocking the next piece of equipment if it needs to go past it. And. So in on top of that, I mean, we've already had one instance where the city of White Salmon or Bingen needed to get a fire truck across and we had to clear out of the way and, and let them through.
The travel police lesson.
Oh, is that, okay. Um, next slide. The, these are the fabricated parts and pieces that we have here. We have some more showing up today and then by tomorrow, we'll have all of the parts and pieces that we think we need. And some extra ones. Fabricated and all onsite. I think that's it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
One is, one we're going to open the.
I know.
That one was covered.
I, the, the, I'll give you the, the Mike Fox date is open at by the end of the night shift on Wednesday. So Thursday morning. That, that's what we're trying for. Realistically, I think it's Thursday night shift or Friday night shift by the time.
Yeah. And remember, our commitment to the community was Sunday night. So anything we can do to advance that. That's to the benefit of the.
Well, especially weekend. I know that so many tourism businesses would adore.
I'll tell you, from my point of view, and I, and some of you know, I'm all over this thing. I really want to compliment both companies and the port, Brian and his team. You guys are working really well together. And when you hit a snag, you stop, you talk about it. Figure a workaround. That's the way the thing's supposed to work and you're going to employ each other.
Thank you.
Yeah. I appreciate it. I think everybody should know we have, all of us have people working on this literally day and night. I get an email at, you know, four, five, six o'clock in the morning and it's a laundry list of here's what you need to do today. And we have people driving to Portland. One guy's coming on his way back right now. Getting new different equipment, if we need different equipment, getting submittals reviewed and commented on and. I mean, we were sending in submittals at eight, nine o'clock last night. So. Kudos to everybody.
And Ryan's, what time do you come up? Three?
Two thirty.
Two thirty. So everybody is. So it's, it's been, it's been really interesting to see somebody that doesn't have engineering or construction experience. It's really been. Great to sit in on those meetings and kind of hear the, the deliberation and the pushback and the. Really a lot of creativity at times as well. So I don't know if there's any other questions as far as the construction or engineering components, but certainly wanted to give you that opportunity.
No, I just, I, it was super interesting and I really appreciate the thoroughness. I know that in our public comments, there was a couple of either. Past engineers or engineers that had some very detailed questions and. What you guys put out was, I think. It was, it was very impressive. So thank you.
So you guys are more than welcome to stick around or leave whichever. Whichever you have. I know you got a shift coming on at seven. As they sit on the board. Ryan might be too far behind. Scott, why don't you come on up, sit over here at the. The table and. We can talk a little bit on. We can talk a little bit on the cost and insurance and so um. You know, one of the big uh elements that uh Debbie uh helped me with is is really kind of putting together the preliminary. Expenses for this project. And so uh we do have a contract with Keywit, uh the actual estimate was five fifteen, even though the contract amount was not to exceed one million. That's why I put it in the consent calendars, because you gave me authority up to a million and so really, the contracts that were over that amount. But the est- preliminary estimates five fifteen, the engineering estimate was three eighty-two. And then we've got Wes Janney, which will be coming back, they are the uh electrical. And mechanical uh engineers, they'll be coming in on the last day to uh to do a a lift check. Uh we also had significant uh traffic control expense uh. In addition to uh Hood River Security, who is our current. Night security, they ended up putting a bunch of. Uh during that full-time closure, they they pretty much covered half the the days and then our guys uh. With overtime, uh but we've had pretty much twenty-four seven out there. Since the twenty-seventh.
And it's really good that you guys have had that, because I understand that we have had some sneakers.
We have and 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 I will touch base on that in the recommendations, because we did have people go through and. Uh Ryan's guys have gotten license plates, so we know who these offenders are. Um and then Debbie was very helpful and her staff have been putting together the toll loss, the hundred and thirty-five thousand. Uh there was pretty detailed breakdown in the packet on how that what that looks like and then. Staffing with the executive team and management team is about fifteen. These are very preliminary numbers, but the reason why it's important to get these numbers out is so that. Uh Scott Rainier can uh do what he needs to to work on the insurance side. And and I do do wanna just caution that, you know, it's, there's been a lot of questions about how this is gonna get paid for. And uh you know, and I think really it's important that we be transparent, but we also be careful. And that these types of issues can take weeks, months or years to resolve and so. Um we we think it's important that Scott be here, but that um. You know, we have to be careful too, because we're learning new things every day. And so, so with that, Scott, I'll kind of let you kind of give an update on the insurance side.
So several sides to the insurance, uh the ports insurance carrier Chubb. Had an adjuster onsite last week, um gentleman by the name of Steve Kook Kook. Uh Steve was here in the afternoon, we met in the office, he stayed around until seven P M. Then toured the bridge, um and I have to sort of echo his comments, which are similar to Commissioner Fox's, he was just. Incredibly impressed with how organized the port was, the engineering firms. How far the process had already gotten by the time he arrived. Um and he actually not only said it to me over the phone, but in an email. Which was included with a lot of the folks at Chubb in the claims department, so um. Things have been, from that standpoint, you guys have done a really good job, uh he took the information. That he gathered while he was here, plus a lot of other information that we've provided since his departure. And that is off to Chubb and they're kind of doing their evaluation and they're working on it. That it will work in parallel. Uh now with a little bit of additional information, the event occurred on six twenty-seven. Uh it took until yesterday. Or the owner of the vehicle's insurance carrier to acknowledge. That they. Believe that there is coverage in place on that vehicle. That is the longest period of time I've ever seen an insurance carrier take. To make such a decision or an announcement, uh but it's a very positive thing. And so we have now, as of today, connected their claims team. With the claims department at Chubb, everybody's gonna begin to work together. Um just a few minutes before the meeting, I received an email. From the vehicle owner's attorney. Uh just asking for any further communication to go directly through the attorney. I look forward to that because the owner of the vehicle and I shared many text messages and phone calls over the last weekend. Um so that'll probably put an end to that, which is great. Um but I think things are moving in a much more positive direction than they were thirty-six, forty-eight hours ago. Um there will likely be some road bumps along the way and we can work through those. Um but that is uh yesterday's notification, which came, I think, at about eleven o'clock in the morning, was really uh. Good to see.
So when I look at the numbers. We we may be able to live with these if we can get the job done sooner. That's one reason why we're trying to search for.
Yep.
Friday day. But one area of risk here is the left check. We know one of the particles.
Yep.
Is a little out of whack.
Yep.
Hopefully, it's not enough to cause a problem, but we're not gonna know that until we lift it.
I'm aware.
Are you, I think I'm sure you're comfortable talking to an attorney, wherever is our. Since they've requested that, is the Port's legal counsel now aware of this and should we be communicating through?
So I I have a recommendation, I I think moving forward, all communication should include the port's attorney. The vehicle owner's attorney and the adjusters from both sides. Uh I just, that's clearly the point that we are at at this time and uh just to avoid any confusion. Um or anything that could potentially begin to occur moving forward, I think it is, yeah.
Well, that's my question, is our legal counsel on this already?
I mean, we literally, uh I have not. This is, I texted Ashley, I haven't heard back from her, but yeah, that I'll definitely be. Exactly, this is real time for sure. Um. So um any other questions for for Scott on the, or any of these costs, I mean, we've tried to. Put as much of the detail that was public information in the exhibits, so there's a lot out there, um so I think we've been very transparent about. Everything that's transpired here, so um. But there is a lot of interest in the open dates and so uh so that's great to hear that um.
Well, we're not there yet.
I I know.
Let's check tonight.
You don't have a countdown clock yet?
Yeah, but nobody's looking at it other than me.
So why don't we go ahead, I'm not gonna read the report to you, but let's just go to the next slide and let's go to the recommendations and so. One of the uh. One of the things about an after-action report is really, what can we be doing as a, as a agency to improve our processes? A lot of these are just management practices that really don't take any action of the board. Um so I did spend some time with Charles Young, who's the county emergency management uh or emergency manager. And they use uh the uh the NIMs uh process, uh there's a reference in the report about this being a type-three. Incident and there were some exhibit materials. Um when I have been at prior stops, I have taken the I S one hundred, the I S two hundred. And it was a much smaller organization, these are really good training that just prepares staff for coordination, so. That's something that we can do as soon as they're available.
Can you explain how involved those courses are or what they involve?
Yeah, they're uh and I'm gonna go back from memory from I took them last, but they're, you know, they're like half-day courses online. Um you know, who's gonna be the uh the point person for communications? Uh do you have an E A P, a lot of just best practices?
Okay, thanks.
So the second recommendation, so the port does have an emergency action plan, it was uh last amended in twenty eighteen. Uh the A P tends to focus on big generic kind of disasters like fires and earthquakes and things of that nature, but. It doesn't specifically address the bridge and so Charles and I talked about, you know, maybe. Uh having him come in or having somebody from the University of Oregon, because the county's currently going through a hazard mitigation uh plan update. And wo- working with them to create a a bridge-specific chapter to that E A P and so that's something that we can just. Do with the the University of Oregon's assistance in the counties.
What I'm, what I'm hearing is that's gonna be like a graduate student project.
Exactly, exactly, these are not, these are not terribly technical, you don't want them to be technical, you don't want them to be twenty pages, you want them to be used.
Yeah.
Um and so it's really just kind of how do you organize information? Uh so three, and again, uh created checklist of updating agencies, I think everybody between Patty and Ryan and myself. Uh we have the people that we talk to on a daily, weekly, monthly basis and we were just hitting them. But did we have a checklist where we were actually going down, okay, got that guy, got, we didn't, we're we're using a checklist, so. We're just gonna update our checklist, make sure that we've got that, uh so that we make sure we don't forget anybody. Um so very easy correction. In addition to that, uh is email list, so uh Genevieve had a very extensive uh constant contact email list. I think we've got like thirty-five thousand email addresses. Uh on our main constant contact list, so we have to be very careful about how to send information out to that, so people don't. Get off of that list, so what we can do though is put together uh sublists. We can have all of our elected uh federal elected field reps could be included as a subset. Our our state uh elected officials, our local uh officials, so on and so forth, so we're gonna develop. Some email lists, we have all those things, it's just a matter of putting them into a constant contact, so it's just a quick button.
That's great.
Um you know, I think there was a little bit of a delay, I think on some of the reports that came out on June thirtieth and so we'll just be. Conscientious to get those things out there on the website, easy to access. Uh as soon as we can, we did have a slight delay there, we have been having issues with our website. And so one of Patty's goals uh in the coming months is to just do a full revamp of our website and frankly, that should. Uh solve some of these issues. Um one of the big issues, it was the twelve-hour uh uh seven-to-seven choice. And so uh lots of input from chambers of commerce, uh individual businesses about. That twelve-hour choice and so one thing that I think we should discuss is. Um how about, how we go around about deciding on those hours, twelve hours. Has been consistently the easiest, most time-effective period of time to get the most amount of work done. But we do have some flexibility, whether it's seven-to-seven, eight-to-eight or six-to-six. And so a lot of these uh issues are seasonal. Uh and we're just about ready to be in the pear season, so that puts pressure on Mount Adams fruit. During the winter, the restaurants aren't gonna be quite as concerned about evening hours. And so um one of the things I wanted to hear from the board is just reaching out. Putting some feelers out about months of the year and different uh. Uh closures based upon what month and then that can just be an exhibit. To the E A P and if something does happen, we've already kind of had it vetted by those stakeholders most affected. Um then we can just plug that that time in.
You know, something maybe to consider, the the new bridge is uh has got a current. Uh conditions report. And the draft now is out and I've been reading through it. There's one section on traffic and they have lifted a bunch of information out of the. The the toll study that was done by Washington State.
Sure, yep.
And there's a tremendous amount of detail and data in there on traffic across the bridge. By day, by hour. And you can see when it ramps up and when it ramps down through the day. And actually, what we did to seven-to-seven fits fairly nicely in there. Uh it would be a little nicer if we went seven uh. Instead of seven P M, if we could take it all the way to. Eight or nine, but they'll still open it up by seven in the morning. You would catch a few more people. You know, especially coming from uh going back and forth to to Washington in the early evening. But when you look at the mass of the data, the seven-to-seven is not bad.
No, and I think um an emergency repair.
Yeah.
Warrants during a twelve-hour closure, if it's just. So you know, wells that were.
Ten P M to.
Yeah.
Six or something like that.
Yeah, and and I'm a little bit with you on, and I think I mentioned this to Kevin before, was um. I I like the approach of maybe looking at this, but instead of. Instead of maybe asking businesses, because businesses do ebb and flow and change and seasonally and all that, we can look at. At more statistical factors such as sunrise and sunset, you know, uh. Trip count over the bridge and maybe kind of go with a more. Um.
Yeah, you're not gonna satisfy everybody, but you can get ninety percent, eighty percent, you're doing really good.
Yeah.
If you could change this closure from nine to nine, but then you would affect.
Yeah.
Uh any other, there would, there would be.
Yeah.
Other industries, that's not to say that those are currently affected, or they certainly are, but moving in only affects perhaps a different state.
Yeah.
But the tra- traffic seems to take off. Across the bridge at around six o'clock in the morning and it's going pretty well at seven. So we're impacting a little bit in the front end. We're impacting more on the back end, but that's because. We're trying to get twelve hours in there.
Yeah.
And you can see by the pictures, there's a lot of fed-up work that has to be done, you gotta get it up in the air and you gotta. Move things around and. The way it's designed, you can't leave an entire member off. So you gotta work one member and then go to the next one and the next one now. You can leave a piece of it off. But now there's a a wind loading requirement that we have to monitor, so. It's all a real balancing act on this bridge that there's a lot of moving parts. It's not just, well, it's up for, yeah, there's only one or two members, no, there's, there's some. Calculations involved behind the scenes.
But good, good further discussion.
Absolutely, good, good feedback, um. Let's see, continuing on, so uh this has come up, this was really a coincidence, because we had just. Uh uh raised the deductible. So one of the discussion items uh is is whether the bridge insurance deductible should uh be reduced back to five hundred thousand. When the annual policy is renewed in in January of next year. Um we saved about sixty-five thousand dollars by uh going up to the million-dollar deductible, there were some other. Issues related to the total project amount. I think it had been one hundred and eighty-seven million, then I think that came down to a hundred million as well and then clearly, you know. Whatever the status is of the current um vehicle operator and owner. You know, if if in the future there wasn't insurance, then that's a hundred percent likely going to be on on the port, so you just have to kind of. Discuss the probabilities and so, but it is worth a discussion because it has been timely, so.
Kevin, can I?
Yeah, please.
I actually, I've given this a lot of thought and I I think the decision made back in January remains the correct decision. Um and for kind of a handful of reasons, um what we experienced, yeah. Coincidental, based on against the decision made just a few months before. Um but I, my suspicion is, and this isn't from an engineering standpoint, it's more from a a risk and loss standpoint. It would take a vehicle of that size to do the kind of damage that was done, I don't see my pickup truck. Doing this amount of damage. Um most vehicles of that size, both in Washington and Oregon, they have mandatory liability limits of a million dollars. And so if the vehicle is of a tractor-trailer size and it's operating in one of the two states and I I haven't looked to see it. Idaho and some of the surrounding states are the same, but my guess is that they probably are. The mandatory underlying insurance coverage. Matches up kind of perfectly with the decision that was made in January. And so to me, is you kind of look forward, you know, with the understa- I believe the understanding that a a smaller vehicle couldn't do as much damage. Um I just, I feel like the decision that was made is still the correct choice.
Hmm.
Um. And that's, I guess, my evaluation of it at this time, but, so.
Cool, so it sounds like there's consensus that, uh, we keep moving forward with that current policy.
That's my feeling.
Okay. And, and then, um, so one of the other things too, that we have seen, this is from everything I've been told, in fact, I think I was talking to Ben's dad. Craig about, if he had ever seen traffic, uh, control out there separating out semis. From, uh, vehicle traffic, and he said it was the first time he had ever seen that. So, um, but e- even though we were, had people out there twenty-four seven, we still had violators. We still had people that, you know, ran through. And there's been, uh, for whatever reason or reluctance by, uh, Hood River Police and the state police to cite or find people. Based upon the ports ordinances and the ports fines. So, um, I'm assuming that everybody's in favor of citing these, uh, uh, businesses. Even if they live in the tri-cities.
Absolutely.
And so, so Ashley is actually loo- looking at our, uh, uh, ordinances to make sure. That we can issue those citations. Um, if we can, we're gonna issue, I think the starting's four hundred and forty dollars. Uh, so those will be issued as soon as she does her research. And if for some reason, reason, there's a limiting factor that she doesn't feel comfortable, then we'll come back to you. With ordinance amendments to clarify whatever needs to be clarified so that we can do that.
I, I'll tell you, I think the other thing that we ought to be thinking about doing, we know who ran the barrier. We got their license plate, and we got a company logo or something. I think we ought to work with the newspaper partners and embarrass them. Cause they went through a barrier and they ignored our guys. And we're trying to keep the bridge safe. We're trying to keep them safe. And they ignored both of them. That's totally unacceptable. And I think we ought to be just.
No, finish.
Yeah.
Could we just ban them from touching our property?
Trespass is one of the options.
Yeah, I mean.
Trespass is, that was one of the.
Frequent, frequent abusers, maybe we'll say, sorry, you can't come across our.
Nobody can say, I didn't know. They did it on purpose. Why can't we just trespass?
There's signs from Portland to Pendleton and Washington side as well.
So she had, she's looking at three different tracks, if you will, on how to approach this. Um, and so I don't think that we've done a lot of this type of, uh, we haven't, the port hasn't really been in the practice.
The longer we go without making a big deal about this in the paper, and I'm looking at you for help.
Paper.
Uh, it's, it's a problem. And, and we're working, guys, we're working our tails off trying to protect that bridge and make it last. Until the new ones open.
Well, the other.
Doesn't help us.
And the other thing too is, you know, I did read through all of the. Comments, feedback, all of that, and a lot of it was from citizens saying, you know, why do we allow truck traffic? And I know as a board. We really look at what the bridge does for the community, and that truck traffic is very, very important for the economy here. So I know that's not really something that we wanna entertain, but if these companies are going to. You know, completely disregard what we're trying to do. I, it's. It's frustrating.
I will predict for you, is the natural progression of our bridge. It will get to the point where the next step is taking the trucks off the bridge. And then we'll be able to keep it alive for a period of time with cars only. And then we're gonna have to shut it down. And if we don't have a new bridge built by that time, people are gonna be going around forty miles. And it's coming. So I would plead for the newspaper buddy, you gotta help us.
Okay, can I just make just one, uh, cautionary note? Uh, because I do, I, I, I do wanna, I feel for, for Isaac Riley. Because there's been a lot of misinformation.
Oh, yeah.
From the very beginning regarding this, and I think there was a lot, there was a rush. Initially, there had been a thought that it was Rapid Ready Mix, for example, but it wasn't. It was one of his other businesses and. Does he have insurance or not? So, you know, sometimes when we're quick to put out. Information, we don't necessarily know the other side.
I do think the community should know that it is being disregarded, which is why, cause I've had people ask me, why do we have to have twenty-four hour patrol? And I said, unfortunately, it's cause people are not obeying our request.
That's right.
And so that simple statement might be known. I also would like to, um. Somehow thank Rapid Ready Mix. I know that they came after the incident and offered, they volunteered to. Help patrol and flag, and I understand as a public agency, we were unable to. Quickly facilitate that, um, just the way public bodies work, but I do. I'm super appreciative of the gesture. And, um, yeah, so I agree, he's gone through the wringer and it's not. It's not necessarily fair.
I don't think this article needs to be about him. It needs to be about the violators going around us. And going out on the bridge as a truck.
The salient detail here is that the Port of Foot River is the state of Oregon government, and we are. State of Oregon, so it's surprising to me that, uh, Oregon State Police were, are kinda sitting on their hands, honestly.
Yeah, I, I, you know, it's like, what court do we cite him into? I mean, there's a lot of interesting little legal things as well. That, that, but I think in the next month, by August twentieth meeting, I should be able to get you some.
But I, but I agree that we should be aggressive and taking action.
How many, uh, how many run-throughs do you think there's been over the last two weeks?
Looking at the charts, probably around, uh, well, I don't know how many they turned around, but there's been over twenty attempts. And they all say that they didn't know.
And what's.
I'm more worried about the ones that went through, but you think it was twenty that went across?
Uh, not, not across.
Yeah, I, I was thinking more of the twosies, threesies.
Yes.
But even that is still bad.
I think we'd like to know our options as soon as we can and expect us to want to do something about it, if we might take.
Yeah, she, if, if she, uh, if, if she can move forward, she's just gonna do it.
Yeah.
What, I, I, I think we should decide it's four dollar ticket.
And so I think those, uh, I think there's a statue kinda as the, they kinda designate what the dollar amounts are. But, uh, but we'll, we'll do whatever we can as quickly as possible.
And you, were you gonna say something?
Oh, I just, there isn't, when you guys are stopping, there's an, is there an opportunity for you guys to be injured by a vehicle that we continue on?
Yes.
And I, I think that is as much an issue here as anything, which is you have, you have flaggers and people out there. Trying to do the right thing, and if they are put at risk physically, that is.
We, we've told those guys when we set it up, if you, if somebody tries to run it, stay out of it.
Yeah, I, hundred percent.
Try to take a picture.
Yes, yeah. So I think is what brought this up is we actually had a passenger vehicle. All our barricades are out, we're blocking whole things, been closed for five minutes, just finishing up. Put vehicles in a way so you couldn't physically go through. Ignored our flaggers, telling them to turn around, it's closed. Pretty much gave us a finger, went around, crossed anyway. So that's the kinda thing that we're trying to stop as well as just a pure disregard of, no, you can't do it for safety.
Again, we need your help.
So, and just, you know, lots of things to go around. Ryan and his team, Ryan's just been, uh, a real stud on this whole thing. I mean. Between him and, uh, Commissioner Fox, they basically have been the project managers or the owners rep for the project. Uh, there wasn't enough time to go and hire, uh, a, a P M for this, but. Between you going out and looking and making sure the right nuggets are up there and bolts, and you kinda. Knowing the questions to ask, I think it's really been all, all hands on deck and it's been very effective.
Yeah.
I think we're getting the bridge put back together a lot sooner than it could have been.
Absolutely. So, anyway, that's all I've got.
That all for that.
Yep, and I don't have anything on the ED. It's all been, I, I feel bad, like I was so used to going out to the airport and. Spending all this time with Tor, and it's like, I feel like I've.
Just abandoned everyone.
Abandoned you, uh, so long.
Well, I do wanna, again, this, this report, this incident report, again, you know, with engineers, with insurance. I just, with Commissioner Fox, I know the countless hours that you've been spending on this.
Thank you.
And, uh, and Tor, obviously, um. No, I just wanna really thank everyone for, um. I know that this has been three weeks now, it's constant, uh. Constant attention, and everyone's really rolled up their sleeves and it's very appreciated.
So I, I wasn't gonna say anything more on the ED report, but I know that the centennial celebration, I know that's one item and. I, you, you guys have been, so I don't know if you wanna talk about that now or wait till the commission roundtable?
Um, oh, we can wait for that. Um, so you're good with your executive director?
Yeah, unless you have any questions specifically, if you saw anything in there worth noting.
Is there any real updates on law line and how that thing is progressed?
Yeah, that's gonna be something which we'll get to in my committee. I'll talk about that commission. Cause there's gonna be a choice, I think, you guys gotta make as far as dates, but.
Okay.
Let me get word to that here.
Okay, and so with that, we will move, I guess, commissioner and committee report. So, um, Ben, why don't you go ahead and get the snuff date on that one?
There's a couple of meetings over there. Uh, there's gonna be a few meetings over the next few weeks that might require some discussion with you and just. A change in existing document, um, that probably would happen at the August twentieth meeting. Which I will not be at, I'll be taking a child to college. So depending on the significance of that. I'll either request that we might change meeting date, cause I won't be able to zoom in. Or if it doesn't require it, I'll include an email with the document to all of you in advance of that meeting. Uh, but I'll know that here next week, I think, after we have our meeting, so.
And you had a.
It's, it's not a major, uh, it would just be a scope change since we're moving from some anchorway to work to roundabout work. It's just a scope change with some, uh, K P S F, I think. Uh, so it's not, uh, a major project thing, but it is moving forward and. We've had a lot of positive feedback lately, so it gets us to where we need to be with, moving with O D A.
And O D A is, um, cause I know that they were. Not killing the project, but they needed more information, and so they're, they're on, back on track, all good.
We've had some great meetings with them, I know. Scott, if you haven't had them, I think we'll have a full report on that, but yes, there's no.
Great.
No, no problems right there.
Thank you for all your work on that.
And thanks for hosting the meeting with, uh, Senator.
I'm sorry, I mean, Senator Bond, uh, at, uh, store and then talking about the project. Uh, and I assume we got him all the information he requested.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna run by and get your signature on the thank you card, send him a.
And he's, he was very supportive and helpful, and he's actually meeting with the director of O D A the following day. Um, I said he would mention it, uh, very, very kind, good meeting.
There was, from memory, there was some grant that we had that we were going, that was aimed at. The other area and we wanted to shift it down to the roundabout.
Senator Bond was key in making sure that that happened. It was half a million dollars of that. And he was instrumental in making sure that that happened, and it has happened.
Okay, great. Yeah, at this point, all three of those grants have all, we've gotten certainty from all of them that we can change the scope.
Excellent.
Before we submit documents, we just need K P F F produce some preliminary drawings and stuff to accompany the, for the scope.
And I think the August twenty meeting, it would be easy to move, so you could be there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll see how this meeting goes and see what exactly is, if it's just a scope change, saying, hey, we're gonna work on roundabout instead of east anchorway, which, but anything else is what you've already said. I probably won't need to be, or Kevin can easily explain that. If it's something more significant, I'll check, we'll check.
Perfect. Uh, Commissioner Baker, do you have anything about the airport?
Uh, just that I think we're gonna move, our airport meeting is actually this week later this week, which is terrible, because then. Can't bring all the developments, cause there's a lot going on, but, uh. So we're gonna, we're gonna restructure when we meet, so that it aligns better for bringing information to you guys. But there are some exciting things in the works, so.
It is, that's called a teaser.
It's a teaser, it's teaser. I don't have anything really solid yet.
And then for the next meeting?
But yeah, there, um, there are some interesting developments, I think, and, um, a few decisions that we'll have to make, and, yeah, next time.
Jeff Bernard is on duty.
He and I have been communicating regularly and, uh, yeah, it's good.
Good.
It's good.
Commissioner Fox, you've.
You already know what I'm talking.
He's been hanging out, not doing much.
Breaking beer.
Yeah. Uh, Commissioner Garing, I believe you have an update on, that might be an action item. Uh, moving forward with, um, potential vices, please.
Uh, did you wanna finish anything on this? Cause we have that as a.
Oh, Centennial, I forgot about that.
Yeah.
Um, we are moving forward with a centennial celebration, October. Six, six, twenty twenty-five, we've been working with, um.
Twenty-four, twenty-four, just a couple of months away.
Yes, twenty-four, sorry. Um, and we've been working to kind of. Figure out the logistics, figure out everything with that, and, um, moving forward with that, we've been working with, um, Visit Hood River. As well as the, um, company that they use for hops best, I mean, harvest best, sorry. And, uh, so we're gonna be able to utilize some of, because it's the day after harvest fest.
Hops fest.
Hops fest, no harvest fest.
Step hops fest.
Hops fest. And, uh, so we'll be able to move it over and utilize some of the stuff to, for some cost savings and some. And, um, but I think everyone is moving forward. We have good, um. Input from WAM, they're on board and, um. Talking about all of the fun things that we can do, and I think I'm gonna present to the. Bridge Authority meeting, um, to make sure that they have a boost at it.
And I've given heads up today to communications.
Perfect. And, uh, did you have anything else that you wanted to?
You know, I, 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 I think the last thing that I remember was that we're still gonna have a control. Point, because one of the things that we wanna make sure is that everybody signs a waiver, and so there's pre-registration. And so it will look like a five K run, there won't be a run, but you'll have that type of.
Pre-registration.
Pre-registration that get, you get something that you know, we know you've signed the waiver. So we'll be kinda controlling that, but other than that, I mean, that was the big concern for me, just from, you know, making sure we've got all. Everybody understands what they're doing.
Mm-hmm.
I think no dogs is a no-brainer at that steel grave. Are you gonna do bikes or not?
No bikes.
No bikes. I think just getting that out there, being like.
We're gonna have some Model As and there's gonna be, there's some historic picture from the ribbon cutting and there, I think Arthur's gonna. Re- try to recreate that photo from nineteen twenty-four, so.
Mister Butler.
Yes, Mister Butler, yep, exactly. So, that's really, I really appreciate everything you guys are doing, so.
I like, I like the idea of the, having the cars of the decades, so we can see the size of the Model T versus. This printer van with the pawns and the bikes.
But also be cool if we, and I'm sure William's got it, an old truck.
Oh, fire truck.
And then we get our new truck.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Extra.
Yeah, and, um, we have talked to WAM about a flyover, and I'm working with, um, the coast, or the reserves. For maybe a really nice flyover, so we'll see.
Lane Franger is interested in photography for the day.
Oh, cool, okay.
So I think we've got a lot of stuff moving forward.
Just something to think about. Uh, maybe talk to the codes card. And see if they can bring up a, and yes, true water over as people are walking underneath.
That would be very cool. I will, uh.
They just, we just don't wanna lift the span.
Bring the short.
I think there's still a pilot or two in town that have flown successfully under the lift span.
Oh, yeah.
Let's not, we're not.
That's a bigger waiver.
Say that out loud.
Uh, speaking of waivers and pictures, do we, with the waiver signage, do we still need to have barricades on both sides?
I don't think so. Uh, uh, you know, I think I was just seeing that there was a, uh.
I, I do, and the reason for it is to keep the cars off the bridge, especially on the Washington side.
Well, we can barricade those, but we were talking about killing down both sides of, it's a guard rail, to keep people from the guard rail. So if there's gonna be pictures and all this other stuff, I think that'd be kind of a decent study.
Exactly, the rail is actually higher than I thought of.
Yeah, yeah, the only section would be the, the lift man.
That's true. I know they're, they do a walk on, it's a much wider bridge in, in Portland, I think it's either the.
Well, those guys are gonna be so freaked when they're walking on that grating.
Oh, my gosh.
They'll take two steps.
But I'm thinking of this waiver would protect us from, you know, any like cuts. But obviously, you know, this waiver would protect us from, you know, any like cuts, because the guard rail's not perfect. So, you know, they know what they're getting into.
Yeah, we'll keep figuring out details. Um lots of meetings are happening between now and then, so we'll keep you posted. Um but exciting stuff, I even might have a really fun music guest.
John May.
I do, I I. I do wanna talk to him about some meeting stuff, so we'll we'll see, but uh. Okay, and then so now back to Commissioner Garing on. Um fun information.
Well, you have it on your pocket. Um Christie and Gretchen Goss and I were talking about. Doing a special plate um for the Columbia River Gorge um that would have like a Hood River theme with um Mount Hood and the river. And possibly some wind sports color in.
Eighty-eight glow.
In day glow. Just you want stay glow. Um and so it would take a five thousand dollar registration fee um to the DMV. And if we are approved, then we can start working with um finding an artist to make the the artwork. And um then you work with um their per, the DMV's procurement office to come up with uh licensing um structure. And then when that happens, uh they they give you vouchers for pre-sales. And you have to sell three thousand vouchers at forty dollars each. And then that money is sent to the DMV and then the process of um getting the license plates to the DMV. Uh for the public use, it starts. So three thousand people will be lucky to get the first three thousand. Uh special plates. And then um.
So just let me clarify this. So uh to do this program, the port fronts the money for the first three thousand.
No, no. No, you.
Well, we have to sell the vouchers.
You sell the vouchers and then the money from the vouchers goes to the DMV.
Okay, so we don't have to put up a hundred and twenty thousand?
No.
You put up five K, then you just, then you sell all three K.
It's on candy bars.
There's there's no time limit to sell the three thousand.
I think a really good example of this is Kevin just sent an email today or yesterday that uh. The uh. Graywell, the Graywell one, they're at thirty-two thousand cents.
And and then um where do we start making some money off license plates?
That's all in the licensing.
Okay.
Structure that you.
Oh, we don't, in the future, we don't make anything off of this, this community.
No, well. How, if I don't know if we set up a separate five oh one three C or how it works, but the money does go.
Oh, it's all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it will make money.
This this was the, this was uh, so when I talked to uh. The Marine Marine Mammal uh Institute at Hatfield. Uh that did the gray well, I mean, they're they're making money off the renewals. So you don't, the first year, you really don't.
It's more break even, yeah.
But then on the renewals and then they want you to buy uh sell additional, I think a minimum of two thousand every other year. Uh but then on the renewals, so even if you don't, let's say after three years, you can't sell another two thousand. You still have, you know, let's say ten thousand in circulation. Every year that you renew, that forty bucks or whatever goes into the, and I'm assuming that the intent is that this would go into the. Uh five oh one C three to fund the parks or, I mean, that's that's the next conversation is where, how's that money get used?
To get a, when you know all the information, can we get kind of a proposal on that? Because I can see. If five grand, okay, that's easy. Sell three thousand, that's hard. But it also says in there you have to sell two thousand each year after that. That's easy, I think. Because after you sell your first three thousand. Then every DMV in the state is gonna be displaying. Your license plate is an option for people. I walked in over here the other few months back and saw the new B one, like, that's cool, I'm number sixty-six. I like three thousand and sixty-six, because somebody sold three thousand, I'm sixty-six. Like, that's neat, so everybody will see it when they go on and say, well, plate do you want? So I can see that's been a little easier.
Yeah. And people are online, so it'll be online also.
Yeah, the first three thousand seems like the harder one, which we can play that, but I'd love to see a, here's how much you get. Per new one per year.
And the numbering is a good idea.
How much in a renewal, kind of an idea, I think it'd be really interesting.
Is is there anybody else on the board that's doing this?
Not lessons application, I would say.
I hope we just mentioned this in a public meeting, so.
Yeah.
Clock's ticking.
Well, there are, you have to be, like, you have to qualify. Public body qualifies.
Is the next meeting too soon to have that together? It's on my.
Okay, well, I would. I mean, um I guess the information.
You have to do the do the proposal and give them the five grand before you give that.
We think we could talk to them and probably try and get as much as possible.
So to me, I think it's. Worth having another discussion. And doing a little study on that. And some of the things like, okay, how would we sell the three thousand? What would be our vehicle to do that?
Our website.
Well, can we do it as part of our our help desk here?
Yeah.
Uh and then what else could we do to stimulate that? So. Where we've got a booth. We've posted there as well. I I don't know, I just. Just thinking about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, celebration.
Yeah, well, I mean, like, you know. Especially if they're numbered. And it's a, it's a coveted thing.
Yeah. So a couple of points. Uh one, it says here in the initial application process, you have to have your plate design. Done to even apply. So to you fill out all the documentation. Their pre-five thousand dollars and your requested plate design. And then they look at that. So. That's one key point. And then the second thing I would say is you could, to raise awareness, you could do, uh we have a lot of artists in the gorge, like, a lot of artists. Um.
Contest.
We could do a contest for the plate design.
That's great.
Yeah, it's a raise awareness.
But I think. If you're trying to make this really, really unique.
Yeah.
You use the bridge, because the bridge is going away. And this is something that they can hang on to. Or do you do it with the windsurfers and that kind of stuff, people?
I guess my thought on this is that what what is the money gonna be used for? Oh, we'll start it. But I I think that they have a closer nexus to the waterfront.
Okay. Tor, I used to get your application for free, yeah, the new special registration place. As an artist, read, then number two, the DMV reviews the application and approves or denies and notifies a group. If it's approved. Then you send a plate design to the.
Which page is this? Where is this?
Page nine.
Page nine.
Page three is the one I'm looking at that says you have.
Yeah, page three, it's like. You better have it, so let's take a look.
Which is fine, if that's true, you do, you just do your contest first, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I could be wrong. I see that.
That would make sense, because then they're approving something.
Oh, gotcha, okay. So I guess the question for the commission then is would we like to move forward? To continue with this process and then basically what we would need to do is between now and our next meeting. Come up with what this competition or artist rendering is gonna.
Yeah.
I think it's a great way to do it, get the community involved.
It it just to, I I'm gonna step up and kind of protect staff here. Because this is a pretty large undertaking, and I know Gretchen, who is kind of acting as a contract employee, if you will, to help, I mean. The hope is that she'll be kind of taking the lead on from a staffing level, because I think at this point. This is a fairly large undertaking, when I was talking with the uh woman down at the Marine Mammal Institute, she's like, that's a big. It's a big deal, so uh having somebody that can be tasked with making sure that. Somebody that can manage the project is gonna be really important. And frankly, at this part right now with everything going on. We're pretty tapped out. Not to say that's not a great project, but just. The less that has to get dumped onto the current staff. I'll be a little bit protective of that.
Well, I.
And I've talked to her about it, and it sounds like, you know, between that and the uh centennial, yeah.
Uh next week, so I'll talk to her before then. Well, I'll kind of get a gauge of her capacity and. We can talk.
So what are you looking for, consensus to get this movement forward?
Are you guys okay with us continuing to move forward? And so at the next meeting, we'll come up with whatever the plan is gonna be for. How we um procure the art.
If time becomes of the essence for some reason, just. Log it together and see what's up.
I'd kind of like to know when we come back. What kind of revenue stream could this impact?
I had, yeah, I don't know, Kevin might have a better idea. I had some pretty old. Numbers, numbers.
But not tonight, but when we.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we'll uh we'll keep gathering more information and bring it to the next. Staff, if everyone, so I don't know if that necessarily needs to be an action item or just a consensus.
Money's being approved at this point.
I don't think so, because I don't think we can submit the application until we have the art.
So then I guess it's just consensus to, I guess in a way, there's kind of a a small internal committee of Christie and Heather. That are the primary leads.
Look at you, Vaughn, holding us up.
I'm just clarifying.
Well, if this requires, I mean, we're getting used to this, if this requires some small contract for somebody.
He's already under contract.
One of them had mentioned it, I'd probably do it, because I understand what you're saying. And of course, this is gonna take some. Effort and manpower on the front end, but I imagine the ongoing maintenance is not that difficult.
I think setting up and maybe a meeting to play for somebody at Hatfield where they just did the puffin plate for the Oregon Aquarium. Just get a, you know, sit down with them just to now to see what the real issues are.
Then we should, we should be clear about that with the committee.
So incredibly. Okay, um does anybody have any commission call, anything else to add? If not, then our next meeting, unless we need to change it, is August twentieth. Any confirmation of commission directors from staff? I guess the one is we will continue to move forward with this. And uh come back next month with probably an action item. And uh keep working on the centennial. Anything else?
That's all from staff.
Okay. Okay, then we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.